I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 4:00 PM on this 12th day of January 2021. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Admin Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vb schools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 PM to prepare for the regular School Board meeting to begin at 6:00. At 5:30, the School Board will conclude unless the Board votes to continue the informal meeting until 5:45. That would conclude no later than 5:45 to allow the School Board and School Administration the time to prepare for the regular 6:00 meeting. So with that, and my only notation is that when we, at the formal meeting, when we get to the agenda, going to be suggesting a slight revision to condense it a little bit given our speaker volume tonight, and information right now, I'll be asking, and we've gotten the staff okay to defer the new course in textbook adoption. So just be, you know, and you can talk about that informally in between meetings, but wanted to alert you to that. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over now to Dr. Bergen. Hello, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Vice Chair Melnick, who is joining us by Zoom, and Board members, Dr. Spence for our viewing public. My name is Mark Bergen. I'm the Chief of Staff, and it is my pleasure to be with you here again to share some updates about our ongoing support for students in both in-person and virtual learning. The presentation overview for this evening is different than what we have presented for the last five or six. This is going to be just a handful of slides, three or four slides, and lots of opportunity for you to dialogue with Dr. Demetra Lindsay and with staff. So as listed on the slide, we are anticipating Dr. Lindsay joining us via Zoom. We're just confirming that her link is working. And then assuming that she is with us, we're still looking for her to join us. She had triple commitment today. So she was working to be with us between 4:00 and 4:30. So I'll just forewarn the Board, when Dr. Lindsay is able to join us via Zoom, she has some prepared remarks to share. And then if you have questions for Dr. Lindsay, then you will want to do so while we have her with us during Zoom, and then when she has a hard stop, is my understanding, at 4:30. When Dr. Lindsay is finished with her remarks and engaging with the Board at approximately 4:30, as indicated on the slide, we'll then have the Administration speak some more with you about some concerns that we have regarding contact tracing. Also, as indicated on the slide, an adjustment to the timeline for the phased return of students to in-person learning, as Dr. Spence has already alerted you. And then we have a vaccination update from Mr. Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer, before having most of our workshop dedicated to Q and A. So without further ado, for about the next 30 minutes, we're going to turn the presentation
Welcome, Dr. Rye.
Good morning. Thank you for the invitation to speak here on January 12, 2021, before the School Board and also Superintendent Spence and parents and the general public. As you are aware, due to several other speaking commitments during this timeframe, my time is limited, but I did want to take this opportunity to speak and clarify the views from a public health perspective. As background to my comments, I would like to start with an update to the Board and the public on COVID-19 disease activity in our region and the city. The City of Virginia Beach is experiencing substantial levels of community transmission with a surge throughout most of the eastern region and much of the state of Virginia. This activity continues to be associated with apparent lack of adherence to prevention strategies, particularly with increased socialization in general and family gatherings during the holidays. In-person learning began for Virginia's Beach City Public Schools on September 29. For the month of September, cases for the city had only numbered 869, with 6.4% or 56 of those cases in persons less than 18 years of age. For the month of October, cases numbered 1,364, with under 18-year-olds being 7.4% or 101 cases. On November 17, in-person instruction reverted to virtual. For the month of November, cases had increased to 3,118, with 8.5% under 18 years of age. And for December, the total was 5,933 cases and 10.4 in the under-18 age group. The impact of exposure for cases among students and staff during surge will be significant regardless of where infection is acquired. As I have stated once before during this pandemic, during our surge in July 2020, we are moving in the wrong direction. Our current momentum has exceeded trends in July and continues to rise with each day, challenging to eclipse prior records. The seven-day average at the peak of summer surge on July 28 was 146 cases. As of January 10, the seven-day average is 375 cases, a 157% increase. That said, we are now in a position to see relief in the distant horizon with highly effective and safe vaccines. Our challenge as a community is in having the patience and perseverance in our mitigation efforts to suppress transmission rates and blunt the impact of this pandemic until we can reach sufficient vaccination levels of the population to achieve effective herd immunity in our community. Throughout Virginia and in Hampton Roads, African-American and Hispanic populations have been disproportionately affected by disease rates and by adverse outcomes of COVID-19, including hospitalizations and deaths. Not only are minority populations experiencing higher rates of chronic diseases that place them at greater risk of complications from COVID-19, they are also disproportionately represented in essential public-facing occupations that inherently require greater risks of exposure to COVID-19. Overrepresented among low-income families, they also incur higher rates of social needs that impact health or social determinants, such as lack of access to basic healthcare, nutrition, and transportation. Minority students represent 52.1% of Virginia Beach City Public School population. Many VB CPS families, particularly minority children, also face challenges of household members in high-risk categories, with multi-generational families, grandparents as caregivers, crowded and crowded households. These families are faced with a difficult choice of deciding between understanding the risk of returning their children to school versus the challenges of adoring parity of access to virtual education. Towards the end of the in-school session in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, as community transmission levels began to rise, the Public Health Department's epidemiological team was seeing increasing numbers of COVID-19 cases in schools, with a greater proportion in higher grade levels, middle and high school. While there was limited evidence of in-school transmission, a retrospective review of data, including the school dashboard, revealed multiple cases in a given setting for a short period of time, over a short period of time, that may not have been reported in a way to permit our Epi team to pick up on patterns and potential clusters. The increasing number of cases and time-sensitive nature of contact tracing required was beginning to stress public health and student health services' capacity to effectively respond. Even now, though school is not in session, we are conducting contact investigations related to exposures associated with sports tryouts and practice. The continued rise in community transmission raises further concern regarding public health capacity and student health service capacity to effectively assess and manage infectious disease concerns in schools. Regarding the children of Virginia Beach, the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health and the Virginia Department of Health place great value in the education of our children and in the importance of in-person learning in an environment that is safe for children, staff, and families. The decision surrounding a return to in-person learning for students is a challenging one. We appreciate the tremendous sense of responsibility and commitment of all, the superintendent, school boards, parents, school staff, students, advisors, and the public. We recognize the need to balance learning, physical, emotional, and mental health, and safety for children, staff, and families. Our input is offered with respect for the perspective of these various roles, which each contribute to the overall mission. Public health serves in an advisory capacity to Virginia Beach City Public Schools regarding matters of public health concern, or in this case, major public health threat. Final decisions rest with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. However, it is a role that we take seriously and with great sense of responsibility. I would also add respect and humility for what is known and unknown in this uncharted territory we find ourselves navigating. While we know much more than was known at the beginning of this pandemic, the full risk and impact under current levels of substantial community transmission and surge are not known and bear recognition and careful consideration. Data increasingly suggests that school reopenings are unlikely to contribute significantly to community transmission when rates of community transmission are low, and that phrase "when rates of community transmission are low" is often omitted when quoted, and schools have infection prevention measures in place. However, there appears to be a correlation between increased community transmission and incidence of cases and outbreaks in schools. While we best remain vigilant regarding the prevention and spread of SARS-CoV-2, we need to balance this important objective with the important goal of ensuring in-person education instruction to children of Virginia. It is in this context that I am advising Virginia Beach City Public Schools of my recommendations, which have not changed substantially since my appearance before the School Board on December 15, 2020. What has changed is there has been a marked increase in substantial transmission of COVID-19 in the community. It is recommended that the timing for in-person instruction be postponed until community transmission levels have decreased below substantial or at least stabilized. When in-person classes resume, or if Virginia Beach City Public Schools makes the decision to resume in-person learning in the current environment of a surge in cases of COVID-19, the following was recommended. In discussion with Superintendent Spence, while these requests have not been completely met, his proposed compromise is reasonably in line with recommendations. I might add, I've not seen the full update, but this is based on earlier conversations. As noted, it is preferred and recommended that in-person learning resume when community transmission has decreased below substantial or at least stabilized and begins to show a significant downward trend. When in-person instruction resumes, allow a three-to-four-week period, a minimum of two weeks, before transitioning to the next phase of opening, to permit adequate time for the impact of each stage to evolve and to be assessed by Student Health Services and public health officials. Four weeks counting from the end of the first week would be equivalent to two incubation periods for COVID-19, which is the reason for that period of time being recommended. Virginia Beach City Public Schools' current proposal provides the minimum two weeks or one incubation period, which may have changed since I wrote this recommendation. We had some concern with the consolidation of larger groups into single phases of transition. For example, all elementary school students were proposed to transition at once, along with sixth and ninth graders. And there was also no pause to assess impact between this group and the first priority group of learning disabled and English learner students. Of note, we agree with instruction of students with disabilities and English learners being first priority. Also, it is noted that elementary school children are deemed at lower risk of transmission of disease and of acquiring infection. And the initial instruction of one grade each of middle and high school is in relatively low numbers, reportedly 150 to 200 students per building. Transmission risk does increase, however, with age, and adolescent transmission, speaking of middle and high school students, is on par with that of adults. We agree with the strong focus on mitigation strategies and with the superintendent's plan to start compliance review teams to visit schools for spot checks and to respond to complaints. Public health has requested and been given permission to also conduct periodic visits as our resources permit. Virginia Beach City Public School has indicated that it no longer use its indicators developed by its advisory committee for decision-making regarding school reopening and closures. However, VDH recommends that schools use CDC indicators to assess school transmission and risk, along with other factors such as adherence to mitigation strategies, consideration of school impact, and local impact to inform decision-making regarding reopening. We recommend close monitoring of internal measures reflective of potential school impact, such as case and outbreak data, school and staff absenteeism and staff capacity, including student health services, support staff and teachers, and the impact of absenteeism and shifts in proportions of in-school and virtual learners on the ability to achieve parity in optimal student-teacher ratio. However, case investigation and contact tracing remain a major means of reducing potential transmission in schools. The ability to carry out this function efficiently is dependent upon capacity of schools and public health. In the current surge environment, with simultaneous utilization of any available reserve staff for outbreak response in high-risk, high-mortality settings, such as long-term care, and with the expansion of vaccination efforts, capacity for these activities by public health is significantly strained. Proposed augmentation of school resources in this area do not relieve public health of its role and needed interventions. If a full investigation of cases and contacts is to occur, Virginia Beach City Public Schools should be aware that current, I'm sorry, it is needed interventions if a full investigation of cases and contacts is to occur. Virginia Beach City Public Schools should be aware that current resources will not permit optimum performance for case investigation and contact tracing in schools if in-person learning is resumed at this time. Lastly, I have been asked to comment on the potential impact of vaccination of school staff and on timing for safe in-person learning. The state of Virginia has chosen to include teachers and direct staff into the 1B priority group of essential workers for vaccination. Clinical trials demonstrating significant effectiveness for the individual require two doses of vaccine administered 21 and 28 days apart for Pfizer and Moderna vaccines respectively. Therefore, individual protection should not be assumed until adequate time for an immune response after the second dose. Also, vaccination status will not eliminate the need for other mitigation strategies, including quarantine of exposed individuals necessary for disease control. Our focus as a state is on achieving vaccination in significant proportion of the population to achieve herd immunity. At that point, we can assure that we have the opportunity for everyone to be safe. Thank you for the opportunity to partner with Virginia Beach City Public Schools in support of the children of Virginia Beach. Once the decision is made, we will work to support that mission to the extent possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Carolyn Rye.
Short on time. We'll try to capture questions. If you feel your question is shared by other colleagues, I'll encourage you to do that. So let's start with Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lindsay.
I have a little difficulty understanding, just so you're aware.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. In respect to the vaccine...
Who is in charge of vaccine distribution? I heard that Chesapeake schools got 1,400 today. That's the first part. Secondly, if it takes 28 days for some vaccines from the first to the second, when will these vaccines be available to our staff and our employees? Because then you're still talking about, once they get here, and then out a month. So who's in charge of distribution so that our school employees can get them, and when will that start?
So I understand you may have a presentation later going into this in more detail, but public health is responsible for distribution to schools. School staff fall into the 1B group. We're currently vaccinating 1As in Virginia Beach, and we hope to wrap that up within the next one to two weeks. And we are working with Virginia Beach Public School Student Health to vaccination of the school staff. We'll start with vaccination of school nurses, and school nurses will be a part of the vaccination program to vaccinate the rest of the staff. Under the prioritization, which is our first approach in planning, the school staff fall into the third group. We don't, we do use that for planning. We do have some flexibility. However, as I look to vaccinating that entire group within 1B, I will remind you that we have a number of groups that have significant morbidity and mortality, and we have to factor that in as we approach them. But I anticipate that we will move fairly quickly through school health. I'm saying that because there's not a plan to move school up to the top of the 1B priority. We will take them as is recommended by state.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you. Dr. Lindsay, you referenced transmission levels regarding substantial transmission levels. I'm not familiar with those metrics. Where do we find out if we're in substantial rate right now? I'm not familiar with those metrics.
You can look at all of the data on transmission and throughout the state at the VDH website, and I'll be happy to send that reference out to you. But you can also go to www.vdhvirginia.gov and go from there to slash coronavirus, and you should be able to see it. But I will try, we'll send you a direct link.
Okay. Thank you. And then...
One other question. So the medical panel that's been advising us and that gave us some significant information over the last couple of weeks, they have, you state in your presentation today that there's a correlation between increased community transmission and outbreaks in schools. However, the medical panel that has presented to us, as well as a vast number of physicians, have emailed us stating that new evidence indicates that that's not the case, and in some instances, kids being in school could actually improve community transmission levels because they're in, you know, a safer environment with controlled masking and mitigation measures. So that was the stance by many of the physicians advising the Board, and I would just like to know the difference between your viewpoint on that and theirs.
I cannot speak for, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear exactly all of your comment. I cannot speak for someone else. What I can tell you is that I would agree that the rate of the risk of transmission of disease or acquiring disease is relatively low in the younger population, but we do see increasing... see increasing risk as children get older. And as they get older, that risk starts approaching or is on par with that of adults. There's a lot of variation, I think, in studies that can be quoted, and some of them look -- do not necessarily take all factors into account. I would agree with your comment, if I heard it correctly, that the mitigation strategies do help improve that risk, which is why we are recommending a strong focus on the strategies and the compliance monitoring that the superintendent is recommending.
Lindsey, can we squeeze in one more quickly? We have Mrs. Melnick. Go ahead, Mrs. Melnick.
I'm sorry. Really had a difficulty understanding.
Oh, do we have time to squeeze in one more quick member? It is past 4:30, but let's see how involved the question is, if we could. Mrs. Melnick?
Yes, thank you. I think I really struggle with the fact that Chesapeake was able to vaccinate 1,400 teachers yesterday. I don't know how many they got through today, but considering we are the largest district in the eastern region, and we have nearly 10,000 employees, and we would really like to get back to school, what can we do to ensure that teachers are prioritized in this next group?
I would say that teachers are a priority in the next group. They may just not be at the top. We're not approaching it quite the same way. Each district has its own resources and challenges. I think we have a much larger provider group in Virginia Beach than you may be seeing in Chesapeake. Also, Chesapeake had substantial work or support by the hospital system in doing a large -- taking a lead in doing a large portion of the vaccination of their 1A group. We're working through that here effectively as a health department in partnership with EMS and our volunteer MRC team, and I think we're making great progress in approaching that. That said, we also are experiencing significant morbidity and mortality in other groups, and I have to take that into consideration in terms of how we prioritize groups and how we approach them. But I can assure you that we will be getting to the school staff quickly.
Is that it, Mrs. Melnick?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Lindsey, how are we doing with time with you? It's 4:35.
I think I'm seeing I need to move on.
I figured as much. I mean, on behalf of my colleagues, we say thank you. Now, because we were limited to three members, maybe we can follow up to see how others may follow up with you. We can figure that out offline, if there's any others here who have any remaining questions. But don't want to take up your time right now.
If you have other questions that you could submit, we'll be happy to address those as well. I do apologize, I'm kind of doing a presentation marathon this afternoon.
All right, colleagues, we thank you very much again.
Thank you.
So we are back to staff at this point.
We are, yes, ma'am. I think to continue that part of the conversation, Mary Shaw is going to talk a little bit about our health staff's perspective on what's been going on.
And colleagues, we do have the slide hard copies here, and I neglected to point out that we do have two of our members participating remotely at the moment, Mrs. Melnick and Ms. Franklin, both for illness reasons, and Ms. Melnick was diagnosed with the flu. She asked me to share that. So hello, Ms. Shaw. Welcome.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Spence. I'm Mary Shaw, the coordinator of health services. I'd like to add a little more detail to our contact tracing process in Virginia Beach schools. The Virginia Beach City Public Schools Health Services Team responds to all COVID-19 positive cases reported to supervisors, principals, and school nurses by employees and parents of students in the school division. Contact tracing investigations in consultation with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health's team are completed when an employee or student is in a school division building on its property or bus during their transmission risk period. Currently, the contact tracing team consists of the health services coordinator, a nursing specialist, school resource nurses, and school nurses assigned to their school buildings. Prior to the holiday break, reported cases for individuals in school division buildings and those working remote or in virtual learning began to increase. After the holiday break, beginning the week of January 4th through 10th, the number of reported weekly cases significantly increased to 157 from 35 the prior week. This substantial upward trend has continued into this week, with 41 cases reported on Monday. Keep in mind that employees and students that are in virtual learning and remote work are included in these numbers. Due to the substantial increase in COVID-19 cases in the school division while still in virtual learning, should we return to in-person instruction on Tuesday, January 19th, we do not have the capacity to meet the contact tracing needs in the division. Our goal is to continue to work with public health, develop new partnerships and strategies, and improve our processes through school leadership and health services to meet this key CDC school mitigation. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Shaw, you mentioned that we have a process to respond to and contact trace for all cases that are reported to our schools. Can you tell us a little bit more about how cases are reported to the schools and if we have a process or directive in place for parents to alert the schools?
Since the beginning of the pandemic, when we started students in virtual or in-person learning, it's been communicated that parents should report if their child has COVID-19 or has had an exposure and is in quarantine to the school itself. Our school nurses have been a primary contact point and the principals. All of these cases have been moved to my health response team because of capacity. We've now have the school nurses working these cases with us. Initially, it was a health response team of about 16 nurses. Same thing with employees. Human resources has communicated several times to them, a directive in that they need to also report this in. So when we get this information, we start working the case using the public health guidance. We do check to see if we have to contact trace. We communicate detailed report information on all contact tracing where there's somebody in our building during transmission risk dates to the epidemiology team at the health department within 24 hours of reporting of that case. Weekends, holidays are all included. They are given all the close contact names. They are given contact information, and they are giving all the specifics of that case to allow them to look at these different cases and determine if there's a correlation or a connection. And Dr. Lindsey spoke to the dashboard, but the dashboard is not the information that we give the health department. We give the health department very detailed information on these cases. Their capacity is stretched, as Dr. Lindsey has said. Our capacity is being stretched with the surge. Our goal is to get a solution to that capacity for contact tracing so that we can do it in a manner to keep people safe and try to get our kids back in school.
Okay, so the parents of virtual students, in general, we believe that they are aware that they should be calling the schools and notifying about COVID.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning.
So we're doing contact tracing for virtual students who won't be in our building for even weeks?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
We're only doing contact tracing if an employee or student is in our building on their transmission risk dates. That begins 48 hours prior to illness symptoms until they isolate, or 48 hours prior to the testing date if they're asymptomatic until they isolate. And that can occur in a family where maybe you have a parent who's positive, and they take the child to be tested. They don't have any symptoms. So we go back 48 hours prior to that test date.
But Ms. Owens' question was, didn't you just ask if we were having virtual students report?
We are, and we're doing that just to give an indication, and right now it's been very helpful.
But we're not doing full contact tracing on those.
Exactly. It gives us an indication of what we're seeing in our school population. We don't want to lose that piece.
Right.
Because if we come back to in-person learning, we're going to -- we know that there's a certain level out there that we're going to have to, for example, when we see the number of cases last week of 157 employee and students, we know that that can be reflected in in-person learning. Now, is that exact data? No, it's not. It's more general data.
So and then just my next question is, you say that you don't have -- currently have the resources. What can the board do to help you with that?
We've been working closely with public health and trying to come up with that solution. The one thing that you've done and leadership has done is the athletic trainers. We're going to be doing -- the contract had to be signed by CHKD. Their CEO just did it at the end of last week. So we've got training set up for our athletic trainers for Friday to get them completely on board and start helping us the following week. They are engaged in sports. Their middle school athletic trainers are helping at the swimming pool areas at the Parks and Rec. They're also assisting at the track for the city to do the health screenings. So they will be there for us. There's going to be some limitations at this point due to the sports activities. Moving out forward, we need to come up with some outside-the-box in bringing in substitute nurses, retired nurses, looking at maybe folks that aren't actually nurses but can get a process that they can follow for us. So we've got a lot of ideas. We had a pretty -- we had a very good sound process. The numbers just got ahead of us, so we need some space and time to get that thing right and get it going. Did anybody else have any questions?
Mrs. Felton.
First, let me thank you, Dr. Shaw, for your being here, and I also want to thank Dr. Lindsey for taking that time out. I know that she has other -- I know she has two other divisions that she's working with closely, and she didn't name them all, but she is the -- as Dr. Osterholm has said, that our Virginia State Health Department is the traffic controller of our situation. They guide the traffic, what comes in, what goes out, and what is settled. And I do want to thank Dr. Lindsey for doing it as well. But I want to ask you, you talked about the numbers got ahead of you, and you just signed the contract with CHKD to do this health screening and training. Can you tell me what that looked like, the health screening, what that looked like and what goes into all the training to give us a -- just to give us a sense of what we are dealing with in the timeline?
Contact tracing, the initial training's about two hours online. The VDH program that they're using is a Johns Hopkins program for contact tracing through their public health, Johns Hopkins Public Health. They've already completed that training. The second is, my team leaders have to communicate to them how to work within Virginia Beach schools. Who gets this information? Should we have an employee? How do we communicate with human resources? How do we communicate with communications? All those different parts that come. How do you work within a school setting in getting classroom list? Working with the principals, working with the supervisors. So that second training is to help them with our procedures that are in place and get them to have an understanding of how that process works. That will be the same process that we will use as we bring people in to help us with contact tracing. Again, they do not need to be a nurse. It is helpful to be a nurse or have some medical background like the athletic trainers, but it's not required for us as long as they have somebody to consult with and they have oversight. So for us to continue with contact tracing, we're going to be looking at some different other resources. You're welcome. Thanks.
Anyone else before we go on with more staff? Mrs. Weems and Mrs. Holtz?
Yes, so I'm kind of surprised and frustrated that we don't have the capability to do contact tracing at the city level nor at our level. So a person trained in contact tracing doesn't have to have any medical background. They go through a two-hour training. They can do every -- all this work through contact tracing virtually from their home, telephone, and computer, correct?
Yes.
So is the city -- have we reached out on some huge campaign to -- I mean, I know this because my nephew worked in a library. He got laid off because they closed down the library. He's a full-time contact tracer. So has the city branched out? Have we branched out to hire especially those who are unemployed because of this pandemic? Has there been a huge campaign to try to hire people to do this? Because the city is short, and we're short, and that's causing a great strain on the ability to get our kids back in the classroom. So what have we done to try to get contact tracers, either city, in the city or in the school system, to hire them and train them for two hours? Is there some big campaign in the city?
I think that Mary's not going to be able to answer a question about what the city's doing. You know, I think, again, you'll have to direct that to public health.
What are we doing?
I do think if you -- well, you've just heard the thing she said was that, I don't remember the exact language, but basically, improving and making more readily available school resources for contact training does not relieve public health of its responsibilities for the contact tracing. As I understand it, and again, you would have to submit those questions to her, we could try to get your response, but in a meeting that we talked about over the break with her about, you know, our desire to provide support, she indicated that the contact tracers who do the community contact tracing, so what we essentially do is we contact trace inside the school. Who was in contact with those people inside the school? And then once it goes to the health department, they do that broader community contact tracing. So who does that person -- who have they been interacting with in the community? And we can't do that. They have to do that. And I mean, that was generally how it was explained to me, Mary, is that you need to jump in there. But and so I think that's what, anyway, Dr. Lindsey is saying, when she says it doesn't relieve the health department of its burden, so you'd have to talk to them about why they're feeling stretched. But I heard her at least say because their resources are elsewhere and, you know, in some of these high morbidity locations and that sort of thing.
Okay. Yeah, I would love to get that answer because, I mean, we've known this problem's been there. We've got a lot of unemployed folks in the city. This can be done virtually. I know it for a fact because I've got a relative that does it. So it seems like kind of a -- I must be missing something, and so I will get that information from Dr. Lindsey.
Yeah, and just to kind of give you a little bit of a view, the expectations of the numbers that would be, you saw the jump when I talked about the increase in numbers in one week. We were actively working on We were actively working on increasing our capacity and getting more people in to do this. The increase in numbers with the health department and with us both moved up quickly. And I think you can look back and you can say, should we expected it? Should we have been ready? I believe that we moved forward and we had a good process and we had plans to increase capacity and to get more people involved, just like you talked about. It got ahead of us a little bit. I take responsibility for that because it's my office. And I communicated that to Dr. Spence when I saw the numbers come in late Friday and on Monday. Didn't give him a whole lot of time. But I'm a pretty straightforward, you guys know me. I'm telling you where we're at and I'm going to tell you, we're going to work extremely hard to get this thing solved. I don't know what we can do on the public health side. Dr. Lindsay has to speak to that. She's got great challenges. She's a medical director for two cities, Norfolk and Virginia Beach both. She did speak that the hospitals, for example, with the vaccines, Chesapeake is handling that different with the vaccinations. Their hospital groups are doing their 1As. She's doing a lot of the 1As at the convention center with her staff. So, there's a lot of layers to it, Ms. Weems. We get it. We know it's an obstacle for our kids and we're going to work hard to get this thing fixed.
Yeah, oh, I know. And Ms. Shaw, I appreciate you and I didn't mean to say that this, by any means, is your fault. I was just trying to figure out why we can't get more of these positions filled because they're, so I will, I will direct those to Dr. Lindsay. Also, okay, so in the third group, and that's, again, it's frustrating, like Ms. Melnick said, that Chesapeake just gave out vaccines to some of their folks, I guess, if it's true, 1,400. That's the same thing that I heard. They're obviously two different cities doing it two different ways. But I'm very concerned about, we're going to get to it, yes, they're in this, they're the third group in 1B. Is that how I heard, Dr. Lindsay? So, it's, they're doing the 1As now and then they've got the 1Bs. And our employees is the, are the third group or are they top of that?
With Dr. Lindsay, and we have Bob Engel here. He's the emergency planner for the health department. He's, he's going to speak on the vaccines after I finish up and Dr. Spence. Public health is in that, that 1B, not specific to first-line healthcare providers. And then, Dr. Lindsay spoke about some other groups that have high morbidity and mortality that they were working through. So, she'd have to speak more to that.
Yeah.
But Bob is here to answer some questions for you guys and he's also going to come up in this presentation.
Okay. Because I would love, yeah, to ask him kind of the difference between us and Chesapeake because that is, that causes some heartburn here. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Among many. All right, I think we're ready to move on to our
Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. All right, and we're going to try by five to continue with our other staff presenters. So, Mrs. Holtz and then Mrs. Riggs.
Thank you, Mr. Doffe, for your presentation. Reflecting on the challenges that Dr. Lindsay expressed, I heard you say that you don't recommend us opening on January 9th. And the problem is with the contact tracing. So, what kind of timeline do you think that's going to bring us into? People are interested in dates and times. How long is it going to take before we, you consider we are ready?
Mrs. Holtz, if you could just hold on that for a minute, I promise I'm going to try to answer that in just a minute.
Yeah, and Dr. Spence is going to speak after me. The only thing I was here to present was to let you know why contact tracing is not, we're not able to do it on the 19th. It's, I'm adding more information to what Dr. Spence is going to speak to.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Riggs.
So, because we, you know, we don't have enough resources for the contact tracing, do we, do we have enough to continue with the winter sports? I know that's taken a lot of our trainers and are they going to be able to just, you know, help, help the schools rather than with the sports? So, maybe that's a question for you, Dr. Spence. I'm not sure, but it's
Currently, the majority of our cases do not require contact tracing. The concern I have for the 19th is if you're looking at the percentages that we're seeing of cases, that we're going to have a high percentage that's going to occur on the 19th when we're in in-person instruction. So, it's more of a projection of being able to manage something. I did not want our employees and our kids back in the building unless we were sure we could keep them safe. Does sports involve some contact tracing right now because they're doing it? Yes, it does. Do we have the capacity because we're not doing the other contact tracing? Yes. If we were in in-person instruction and we had sports, unless we increase our capacity, it would definitely, it would add to what we have to do. Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Ms., Dr. Bergen, we ready for our next step?
Dr. Spence is going to get up next. Thank you, everybody, for what you do.
And thank you. And we, and please pass on our thanks to your team of nurses.
Yeah, I would echo that. Mary, thank you. I know you know how appreciative we are of the work that you and your team have been doing and continue to do for our students and our staff and their families. So, as Mary was talking about, well, we, we do believe, and we shared this with you all when we brought forward our recommendation to open schools during our last work session, there are, you know, there's the metrics that we have used to drive some of our decision-making. And then, there are what the CDC talks about as a key third metric, which is the health, our ability, our assessment of our ability to keep in place appropriate health and safety mitigation strategies. And they outlined, and we shared in our last conversation with you all, specifically five health and safety mitigation strategies that you have to be able to say you have in place in order to have school open safely and lower the risk of transmission. So, this is all, we've talked with you about this before. Right here, we're highlighting the one that's concerning us right now. So, of the five, we do feel very comfortable that we can ensure compliance with the correct and consistent use of masks, that social distancing to the extent possible, we're able to arrange that. We were able to do that when we opened before. And of course, the hand hygiene and the cleaning and disinfection, we've talked at length about, with you about how all that works in our buildings. But contact tracing, as Mary has talked about, is challenging and specifically, as Dr. Lindsay told you, she doesn't believe that the Department of Health can, I think her words were, provide optimum support for contact tracing in the schools, given the current number of cases in our community. And so, because of that, although I still believe we can assure that four of those measures on this CDC key measure chart can still be met, I can't provide the same assurance, quite frankly, to our families and our staff for that fifth measure, which is contact tracing, which, you know, I'll reiterate to you, as I shared with you earlier today, that's hard for me to share with you because I've been confident that we can bring our children back and do that safely, based on our understanding that transmission risk is low in school and based on our assessment of the key measures, which are those strategies that are proven to keep risk low. But as, as has been shared in the past 24 hours, information from the health department and that recommendation that you heard, and then, of course, my conversations with our own division health services team, is showing me that our, our need for contact tracing is, has become a burden. And certainly, where we don't open for in-school learning would be a burden on the ability for local officials to contact trace. And I will say, even with students and virtual learning, we're seeing a rising number of school-related cases. So, this, you know, employees and students who are, who are reporting that they have this virus. So, I've always tried to make it clear that the health and safety of our students and our staff is at the front of our thinking. And I assure you, board members, and I think you know this, that every decision that I make comes from that primary goal. So, given this, this new information and the recommendation and the concerns that you've just heard from Dr. Lindsay tonight, it is important and necessary, I think, for me to change my proposal for when to bring back our option-one students to the classroom. So, as we've shared a little bit, my recommendation specifically is going to be now to delay the proposed return for pre-K through sixth-grade students to February 1st. Can you go to the next slide? And that aligns with the start of the second semester, although it's not specifically the reason that we're doing that. It's a, it's time for Mary and I to work with the health department, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And Mrs. Holtz, to your, to your question, I believe it's a good timeframe to begin with, to delay the start for those students to the, to February 1st. And then, after the monitoring period that was proposed originally, then secondary students would return the week of February, the 22nd. And I, I want to reiterate that I do believe we need, we do need a plan to bring our students back to school rather than waiting. We need a plan to bring them back. And so, I am proposing that. And I will say, in addition to that, I am also asking and recommending that rather than continue to return for additional votes on this matter, that you all grant me some authority to consult with our internal health staff and to consult with the health department to determine if that timeline, which essentially is three weeks from today for a return, will allow us to provide assurances that we can sufficiently meet the CDC's fifth mitigation measure around contact tracing and if not, with sufficient notice to the board and the community to delay further. It's not my goal to do that. I want us to be able to bring our students back, but I want to be able to say with confidence that contact tracing can and will occur. I don't think there's a specific, Mrs. Holtz, to your question, a specific right time. You know, at the end of the day, I think it really comes down to, again, our assessment of those key mitigation measures. Can we do what we've said we need to do in order to lower the risk and, and lower the risk of transmission in our schools? And that's our assessment of those measures that have been outlined for us by the CDC. And I believe, and it is my intention, that we should be able to do that, working closely with the health department and Dr. Lindsay and Mary Shaw over the next three weeks, to identify what needs to happen to make sure that this information about stretching our, our ability to contact trace then, that we can find a way to move past that, as, as Mrs. Weems was indicating is important. So, that's the, the change to the recommendation that I brought forward to you at last week's work session. And so, as we move this evening into your deliberations, I'll ask you to consider that recommendation in lieu of what was originally proposed. In the meantime, several of you have talked about this. There is, I think, some hopeful news about our vaccination process here in Virginia Beach. And so, Mr. Freeman, who has been our, as I mentioned at last week's workshop, our lead on that process from a planning perspective on the school side, is available via Zoom tonight. He is going to talk a little bit about that. And then, as was noted, we also have the health department's emergency planner here, Bob Engel, who's been working in tandem with Jack on, on this process to try to answer any questions about that that you might have. So, we'll let them talk for a little bit and then we'll go back to questions for the time that we've got left. So, Mr. Freeman, are you there?
Yes, sir. Next, Dr. Spence. And as Dr. Spence mentioned, we're coordinating with the Department of Health and the city. We're regularly tied in to the process. And Dr. Spence has already introduced Bob Engel. He's been a very important part of our process and advising us and guiding the process. So, you heard from Dr. Lindsay earlier that in Virginia Beach, we're still in the Phase 1A. And you'll hear me talk about Phase 1A and Phase 1B, and some people refer to it as Tier 1A and Tier 1B. It's the same terms. And schools are in 1B. We expect through coordination with Mr. Engel to get the first round of vaccinations available on the 25th of January. So, right now, what we're doing, and then the process will continue from there. So, our, we are, have a communication that's developed that we are intending to go out as soon as tomorrow, that will inform our employees about the process and allow the opportunity for them to go to a link and indicate whether they are, intend to take the vaccination. And by doing that, we will then develop the list of those that intend and send prioritized lists over to the Department of Health so that they can get scheduled for their vaccination. There's a logistical process that includes a website that requires going in and registering, putting in your information to get scheduled for your vaccine. And then, that also gives follow-up scheduling as part of that process and allows tracking through that website. So, that's, that's the next step is the communication that will go out to our team. And then, the, the way that will look are points of distribution. So, the convention center has now been stood up as a point of distribution, and that's a joint effort from the, from public health and the city. And as part of those convention center clinics, points of distribution, we will be able to send our employees to go there. And those are run by the city and public health, but we'll be able to send our employees and get a designated number of vaccinations. Right now, we're looking at about 500 per, per day, and they're doing those three days a week at the convention center. So, in addition to those, we're looking at doing Virginia Beach City Public Schools closed pods. And that's just, all that means is it's a point of distribution that is solely intended for employees of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Those will have more involvement from our staff. And our intention at this point is to have our nurses also share in the, in the load of administering vaccinations with also support from the Department of Health. So, the week of the 25th is when we're intending to get our closed pods up and running as well. As you can imagine, with any new procedure, you have to work into it over time. So, we'll start with the process and that will, we'll be able to build up our number of vaccinations that we can give as part of those closed pods over time. The timeline, we know that has been a common question and that's what's on everybody's mind, is how quickly can we get this done? And Dr. Lindsay referenced it in her statement a little bit earlier. So, she mentioned the two different timelines associated with two different vaccines. So, currently, we are scheduled to receive the Moderna vaccine. And she, as she said, there's a 28-day wait period between the first vaccination and the second vaccination. So, from a timeline standpoint, we will know more detail as we go. We will be able to update you on what the status is and what the projected timeline is, but it's very early in the process right now. So, we have about 15,000 total employees. It will take us a period of time. You can imagine when I say that we've got about 500 that we can do at the convention center on any given day. And then, as we stand up our pods, we'll be able to learn how many we're going to be able to push through there. So, this will be a substantial amount of time in numbers of weeks and months to be able to get everybody vaccinated. Now, that being the case, we've heard our public health professionals that have come and spoken to you, that also is dependent upon what the acceptance rate is. So, things tend to move more smoothly or quickly, I should say, when there are, is a lower acceptance rate. Certainly, we want to, part of what we're doing is the education and the importance and the significance of being able to get your vaccine, that it's been proven safe and effective. And we want to provide all those educational materials to encourage our, our population to be able to get the vaccine. So, we will give you more updates as we progress. That's the, that's where we stand at this point in time. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Spence to close it out, and then, I'll be available for any questions that may come, as will Mr. Engel. With that, Dr. Spence, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And Madam Chair, that concludes our presentation for the workshop and we'll, we'll happily answer any questions that you, that you have.
Okay, questions for staff or Mr. Engels? Beginning with, and I, I under, is Ms. Franklin, is she still looking to, Ms. Tony, Ms. Franklin, can you hear me? She's alone.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, would you like to start?
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, this question was actually for, for Mary, but I wanted to just ask, so, if we get our contact tracing, or if we get enough contact tracing to handle our school system? contact tracing, or if we get enough contact tracing to handle our school system, was I correct in hearing that we are still dependent on the city to, to ramp up their, their staff in contact for contact tracing as well? Because they, they kind of play a part in how this all works. I just wanted to get an answer. Is, is, so even if we get to the point where we feel like we have enough help to contact trace, are we still dependent on the city ramping up and having enough help as well?
What, what we depend on from the city, from Public Health, is to be able to look at our cases and determine if there's a correlation or connections that would require some type of response, be it closing an area of that school or closing the school itself. They have to go through the cases, that's one piece. The other part is, and Dr. Lindsay spoke to it, when we have somebody in the school with COVID-19, they have to continue the contact tracing in the home and communicate and monitor the individuals in the home. So yes, they have to be in partnership with us, and Dr. Spence did talk about the fact that they will be a piece of our planning in the next few weeks to meet this need in contact tracing that we need to meet.
Okay. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I just had surgery today. But I just wanted to find out, so does that mean then, as the community surges, or, you know, if, if the community surge still occurs, that we are still going to be subject to them being short-staffed in, in order to make sure that we have proper contact tracing? The ability to do that properly, I should say? So I just wanted to, to see how, how tied in we are to them perhaps being short-staffed in that regard?
I can't give you a clear answer, but I can tell you that we have partnered with them through, through the years with all contagious conditions. And I, and I believe that we can work with them to see if we can relieve them of some of the things they have to do, working with their epidemiology team. I cannot answer for the Health Department. But again, the process in place right now is not at the capacity to meet our needs. So we need to work together to see what we can do, stretch out further than we have, and look at different areas and what they're doing, get with Dr. Lindsay's team, see what we can do. We've done some of that, but we need to, to move that forward in, in a bigger way to meet this. And Mrs. Franklin, Mr. Engels here. Do you want to offer him the chance to add anything?
Well, I would just, I would just add that, you know, if we are looking to enhance the, the need for contact tracers in the community, that we find ways to make that happen then. Because, you know, unfortunately, if that's the case, then we are really going to be dependent on them, ensuring that they've got enough help on, in the community side. And even if we, you know, are able to train the athletic trainers and have enough help on our side, it, it just seems like we're still dependent on, on that in order to make these decisions, to open or not open.
So, Mr. Engel, is this something you can lend more information to, or not your own?
It, it's outside of, of what he is. He's here for the vaccines. He's not involved in that piece, in the contact tracing piece.
So the vaccine distribution, just so we understand?
He's here to talk about the, the process of vaccine distribution.
Okay. So why don't we offer you the opportunity for that, sir?
Well, I don't think he was here to present. He was here just to be available for questions.
He's just here to answer questions.
I understand, but I think I was asking him to come to the podium, so those who want to ask him.
Okay.
Can.
Okay.
Yours is. Okay. All right. You go ahead.
So, and Jack, if you're still listening, Mr. Freeman, just, just to be clear, I, I'm understanding that our nurses, our school nurses are going to be helping in the distribution of the vaccinations. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Because we have 86 schools, so I'm assuming we have at least 86 school nurses. 500 vaccinations a day doesn't seem very, like very many when we have 86 nurses to help with our distribution of vaccinations in the city. Can you explain why, why it's only 500 instead of, I mean, like, I heard that Chesapeake had 1,000 or more yesterday?
Mr. Engel, I'll start with that one, and then I'll turn it over to you. So the 500 is the number of vaccinations that they can allocate to us just at the convention center sites early on in the process. So if you remember, I described that there were going to be three days a week at the convention center with current plan, be able to do 500 each of those. But we also were going to have those closed points of distribution.
Okay.
That we were going to be able to distribute those as well. It's actually at those closed pods where our nurses are going to participate in that vaccination. And the, you know, look at your, where's your limiting resource? And one of the things you look at when you look at distribution is where are your bottlenecks? Right now, what you're describing is, we have plenty of nurses to be able to apply the vaccination. Right now, we're working with Mr. Engel and the Department of Health on the number of vaccinations that we can receive and be able to distribute. And then we'll have a better understanding of whether it's the number of vaccinations that we're receiving is where the limitations are, or where it's somewhere else in the process.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Engel, anything to add to that?
Yeah. I had that the limiting factor is the availability of vaccine. And so for that week of 25 January, I'm requesting 10,000 doses. And out of that 10,000, 2,000 is going to the school teachers. So for that first week, we're going to vaccinate 2,000 teachers, and we're going to be able to repeat that hopefully every week. But it depends on the availability of the vaccine. That's the limiting factor right now.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. Okay. Mrs., and so Mrs. Manning and then Mrs. Weems.
I, yeah, I have one on the vaccine, but then questions on a couple other things. I have heard that our state has been allotted a vast number of vaccines, but somehow they're not getting distributed. Are we not, at the local level, not receiving those?
I haven't heard that. I request, every request that I've made each week for vaccine, I've received. Like, this week, we're doing 1,500 shots. Next week, we're doing 2,500. And then that following week, I'm ramping it up to 10,000.
Okay. Why can't we ask for 10,000 this week?
Because you have to plan a week and, two weeks in advance to get it, make the request this week, it shows up next week, and then I use it the following week.
Okay. So can we request more than we have?
I requested 10,000 for that first, that last week in January.
Okay.
And we're building this up. We can't just flip it up and go to maximum, you know, speed.
So you're just requesting what you believe that you can handle at this point?
That first week, yes. We're, you know, we went from 2,500 total next week to 10,000 the following week. And that's if I get the total 10,000. I don't know that I'm going to get it. I've made the request.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. So it seems like this process, I mean, everybody, of course, is super excited about a vaccine, but if you start the 25th, you're only doing three days a week at the convention center, 500 roughly a day. Hopefully, we'll open up the pods to do more. But this whole process of getting vaccines for those, again, who choose to get a vaccine, because not everybody, we can't force people to get vaccines, obviously, but it's going to take a process of about, with my math, about seven or eight weeks. Is that true or false? If we can even get the vaccine, if we can get the vaccines for 15,000 people, will it take about seven or eight weeks?
I think we'll finish schools well before that. If I'm doing 2,000 a week.
Okay.
That's the first dose, and then we've got the second dose that follows on that. But yes.
2,000 a week?
And we can ramp it, if, if, as more vaccine becomes available, I will, I will increase those numbers.
Okay.
But yes, I don't think, I don't think it's going to drag out for seven or eight weeks.
Okay. Okay. Hope, yeah, that'd be great, if we could get that done in four weeks, because then we have to wait four more weeks. Okay. Now, with the, with the, when you said 2,000, and you actually said for teachers, is there a hierarchy in that group of teachers, nurses? What, what is our Virginia Beach City Public Schools hierarchy of who gets it and how does that work?
That's Jack Freeman's.
Okay. Jack, how, how does that work?
Yes. So that's our, so right now, we have the communication that has gone out to, that I described, that it's going to go out for tomorrow is the intention, to send it out and then get feedback for those that want to take it. And we do, we are working on the priority list for who gets it. So you can imagine that we need custodial workers, that they're essential to be able to implement our mitigation strategies. We need teachers. We need food service assistants. We need bus drivers. So we will take a look at our prior, at our priorities as we receive the, those that want to be able to take the vaccine and adjust and be able to make them, push them through. I'll take this opportunity to talk about one of the pieces of balance that goes with distribution is, you, you want to be able to prioritize effectively, but not control it so much on the prioritization that you limit the number of vaccinations that you can effectively implement. So that's the balance that we're working on is, and you, you may have heard the governor speak earlier, and he talked about in terms of use it or lose it. And one of the things that he was describing is, don't be so controlled on your prioritization that you miss opportunities to distribute the vaccine. And he used it in, in small level terms of, hey, if you've got a bottle that you can vaccinate 10 individuals and you only have seven that are next in priority, go get three other people that aren't necessarily in the priority list and vaccinate 10 people. So that's the balance that we're going to be working with as we select those four priorities.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I provide a little context?
Yes, please.
So Tier 1B, the upper level, first level, is police and fire and hazmat. Second level is corrections and homeless people. Third level is schools and childcare. And then it goes, I think it's agriculture and all the other levels after that. And alongside that is seniors, which I, I'm hearing today that the, the seniors they have in category one up to today was over 75. What I'm hearing today is that they're changing that to over 65. I'm not sure about that, but that's what I'm hearing. Seniors 75 and above in Virginia Beach, by the census from 2019, is 27,000 people. Schools is 15,000. Tier 1B altogether, we estimate is 77,000. So that's the number that we're looking at just for Tier 1B, 77,000. And there has to be some equity when we're doing the, the distribution here for vaccinations. And that's why we can't just do all schools at the very beginning.
Right. Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Just to let you know, school nurses were moved up into the 1A category, and they started vaccines last week. They've been getting vaccines. It was offered to all our clinic assistants and our school nurses, and it's going to be offered to our substitute nurses and our substitute clinic assistants. Thank you.
A little more context, too. You mentioned we were doing three days, we're doing three days at the convention center, 2,500 each day. And the reason we're doing that is because we have second dose vaccines that are due on Tuesday and Thursday from the vaccines that we've been doing the past couple of weeks. So going forward, there's going to be Monday, Wednesday, Saturday, a first dose. Four weeks later, that's going to change to a second dose. Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday will be a new first dose, and it'll just keep rotating like that. So we're going, we're going to be going six days a week, 12 hours a day, as we go forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Holtz?
Thank you. I don't know who this question is for, but the contact tracing seems to be the determinant of the day. But all of us know that today, the positivity rate was 20.9. And I'm thinking, it's very possible that February 1st or February 22nd, that number might even be higher than that. If that's the case, are we just to disregard that entirely and move forward anyhow?
So I'll, I'll address that. No. I think you heard me say that one of the things I would be asking for, as you consider my recommendation to change the, the start date, was that I would also be asking for your acknowledgement of my authority to delay further if we assessed with Public Health that we couldn't safely return to school. So I did.
Why would we do that? That, that's my question.
Well, we'd have, we have to assess our ability to return safely to school. As we get closer to those dates, we would have to be looking at that, and I'd have to be able to make a decision that I could, with sufficient notice, let you all in our community know, this is the reason why we are unable to do that. I don't want to do that. Here's what I've heard Dr. Lindsay say, and what I think, that the lowest risk group is the group we're proposing to bring back first, which are the youngest students. The higher risk group is the group that we would be proposing to bring back later in February, and that is the older students. The modeling from UVA shows that we will have met the peak and begun to see a downward trend in the surge that we've been seeing by mid-February. So if that were to hold, these are the right dates, in terms of that. So, you know, so there's, there's a sort of method to the thinking in terms of the dates. What I didn't want to do, you heard Dr. Lindsay say in her recommendation, that she does not recommend that we open during the surge and that we wait for the, the number to at least stabilize. I didn't want to leave it at, we'll wait for that. I wanted to have a plan to bring students back with the ability to monitor that and our ability to meet our mitigation obligations under the CDC's assessment tool that we shared there earlier, and, and be able to have a date. People can plan for that date. It's the, it's the start of the second semester. And then if we needed to do anything with sufficient notice to the board and to our community, we would, we would need to pause. But our hope is to use this time, which is three weeks between now and then, to get to a place where we have confidence with the Health Department and with our own internal staff that we can contact trace if we put students in the building. We know we can do the other things. And we know we've gotten questions about that, but we have a high degree of confidence we can do the other four things. This is the one that, right now, Public Health has stated, clearly stated, they are not able, if we were bringing students back right now, to provide optimal support for contact tracing. To me, that's the, that's, that was, that was the benchmark for me when she said that. And, and quite frankly, her statement today to you all is the first time she's provided a specific recommendation. I think we have to acknowledge that and, and, and take that into consideration.
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful.
I think that gives you a sense of the degree to which she's concerned about what they can do with contact tracing.
I'm very hopeful, too, but our plan is really based on the unknown, and that's, I get it. You have to have some days, but will we, will we as a board be looking at this in the future? Or is it going to depend on the judgment of the Health Department?
Well, that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for your consideration this evening, as you deliberate upon this during tonight's action session, your consideration to grant me the authority to make that decision in conjunction with the Health Department. It's a matter of whether or not you believe I can do that, or if you need to get back together and vote on it again. You'll have a session, by the way, on January the 26th. That's about a week ahead of when we would be bringing students back, and an opportunity, certainly, for us to discuss it. But I mean, at some point, you've got to give me the authority to work with our, with our Health Department, with our team, make that assessment and move us forward with sufficient notice, obviously. As I said, it wouldn't be about keeping you or the community out of the loop, but we have to, we have to be nimble. To your point, it's, our plan is an unknown. Our plan has been an unknown for nine months.
Yes, true.
And, and frankly, every two weeks, something new evolves and we have further conversation. You know, it was an unknown in July when we proposed metrics that were opposed then. And then we brought students back under those metrics, and we found out we could do it. And now it's an unknown because there's, you know, emerging evidence that says you can have kids back safely, but you have to be able to do certain things. And right now, what you're hearing is, we don't have confidence we can do one of those, which is the contact tracing. And so the unknown that remains is, will we be in three weeks' time, ready and able to do that so that we can bring staff and students back safely? And what I'm saying is, I believe we can work with our team to do that. We also know we will have begun a vaccination process, although that is not a benchmark we should be talking about in terms of getting kids back in school, and we can talk about why. And, and then I'm asking for the flexibility, as the CEO of the division, to be able to provide you with insight, working with the Health Department, on whether or not we return on that day, with the clear goal being to get students back on that day.
Okay. So Mrs. Manning and Mrs. Weems, just tell me if you're willing, because it is 5:32, if your questions can wait, or are they quick enough that we can sneak them in to be able to convene before the formal meeting?
Well, I had two, so maybe I'll just do one, and I'll do the other one later, if that's okay. I, I'm very frustrated that we spent an entire meeting last- Um, I, I'm very frustrated that we spent an entire meeting last week. Dr. Spence made a proposal. We've discussed this for the last week with the community. Um, we've gotten input from the community from both sides. And, um, and, and then, all of a sudden, a couple of hours before our meeting, we're notified by the Public Health Department that they can't accommodate our contact tracing. I, I don't understand why this wasn't shared with us last week, because metrics have not changed. Metrics have, metrics were high last week and the week before. They, they've been at this level. So, I'm extremely frustrated that, um, that this is happening and our kids are the one that's gonna suffer. Um, my question is, and I'm not sure who can answer it, because it may be Dr. Lindsay, um, is how can, Chesapeake is returning all of their students, all of their Option 1 students in all grades next week. How can they manage it and we can't?
And, and you're, you're precisely right. I don't think there's anybody in the room that can answer that question. I think it is dependent on the unique circumstances of Chesapeake. They, I think she alluded to a few of those relative to the number of first responders in Chesapeake versus here. So, why 1A would, would extend beyond, um, theirs, uh, 1A phase? Um, and, and also what their health system's been doing to administer the vaccines. I don't know the particulars of that.
I'm not talking about vaccines. I'm talking about the contact tracing aspect.
Yeah. I, I understand. I, I'm not sure if that's giving them different levels of confidence. And I'm not sure what their Department of Health Director is telling their school board specifically. I, I do know that some things are different. I'm, I'm familiar, based on a conversation with the superintendent, for example, that they have two epidemiologists in their Health Department who are dedicated to the schools. So, I don't, I don't know all the answers to your question. I think you would have to talk to the Health Department about that.
Because I feel like we're throwing out the door all of the advice that the physicians that are advising our board, saying that if we get our kids back into school, it could lower community transmission rates. So, um, so, I'm looking at this from their perspective in that advice that if we get our kids back to school, it could help the community burden. So, that's my two cents.
Okay. With that, this will continue in the formal meeting, uh, under Action. And this, 6 o'clock, and this workshop is adjourned.